Welcome back, everybody. First on the agenda on a new business is Adam Lanley for variance to raise the existing single-family home and construct a new single-family home on the premise number nine Newton Street. Anyone has a cell phone or pageant? Please put it on silent or vibrate.
I don't think they do. I was thinking about that.
Still flipping on myself.
It's just at your house.
Not my house. I tried to grab one 40 years ago. I couldn't get one.
Anything?
Anybody?
Nine Newton.
Nine Newton Street? Come on up.
Adam Laney, nine Newton Street, Quincy, Mass.
Okay, why don't you tell us what you want to do with your property?
We'd like to raise the existing structure and build a new structure approximately 2,500 square foot, two and a half stories. The variance that we're requesting is on the Newton Street side. It's a corner lot, so we're requesting instead of a 25-foot offset on the Newton Street side, we'd like a 15 or maybe...
So 16.5?
16.5 then. 16.5 on the Newton Street side.
You're all set.
Yes, sir.
Right. I was up there looking at the property and it's hard to get in there. The hedges and the big... Tough to get in the back there, but whose car is parked on the front there?
That is mine, the white 4Runner? That's mine.
Are you gonna put a... What are you gonna do for your driveway that's on the other side? Is that an extra car that you don't use?
Yes, that car's gonna go away.
Okay.
The driveway is gonna use the existing footprint. I think it expands maybe two feet.
Yeah. Any questions?
No questions.
No questions. Not at this time.
Thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor? They're all set. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
I don't even know if it works.
The mic or...?
Yeah, the mic. Anyone to speak in favor? Second call. Third call, if all that close. I have a letter here from the BPW. May 4, 2022, nine Newton Street, case number ZBA 2164. We reviewed the submittal for the above referenced project. Our comments are as follows. The existing paving in Batcock Street was repaved in 2021. There is a five-year moratorium for digging on the new paved street. Specify how much interior area will be increased through the development. Provide plan showing a layout of utility grading and drainage. Upon completion of the project, add build plan showing all utilities, building footprints need to be submitted along with digital file. Anything else, please advise. Is there anyone here opposed or undecided? First all. Second call, counselor. I don't even know if that works. Is that on?
I'm loud anyhow.
Irish whisper.
Good evening. Glad to be back in front of you folks. It's a long two years and good to see everybody back out. I have no issues with the Laney property. I went down and took a good look at it. I know that the lot itself, it looks like he's got the new structure pretty much going on. The footprint that he had, and it looks like he's picking up some space on all sides. Maybe you're losing a foot or so on the Mike Miller end, but I'm supportive of this project. Thank you.
Last call, anyone opposed or undecided? Call up party here and close. I'll be voting for it.
Yeah, I'm in favor. I think the lot definitely needs something.
Next house. Mr. Hamel?
Yeah, I think it's a nice... It's gonna be a nice house. I'll be in favor.
I'm in favor.
Can I have a motion, please?
Yes, sir. Case number ZBA 21-64. Adam Laney for variance to raise the existing single-family home and construct a new single-family home on the premise number nine Newton Street. Make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion? Seeing that, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, close. Don't move. You're all set. No. Local, don't happen. We're here. ZBA 2227, 609 Washington Street LLC for finding variance to extend the business use on the premises by converting the second floor of the premises from residential use to commercial use and construct a roof deck on the flat roof section of the building along with the patio on the front lawn area for outside seating on the premises, 609 Washington Street, Quincy. Please step outside if you're gonna speak. We're talking here. Thank you. Counselor, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of 609 Washington Street LLC regarding the property at 609 Washington Street. This property is formerly known as Maggie's Lounge. It was before that, it was the Washington Tap. And I believe it's been a restaurant lounge for numerous years. My client, Dawn Nguyen, has purchased the property and she wants to convert this to a more family-friendly type of lounge and facility where she'll have karaoke on the first floor and she'll have a sports bar on the second floor. And therefore, she's seeking to expand the lounge area from the first floor into the second floor area and also construct a roof deck on the flat section of the roof with a small 10-person patio in the front of the building as well. This property is about an 8,300 square foot parcel of land. The building that's on the site is a non-conforming commercial building, and so therefore, we're seeking a finding to alter the building and expand the restaurant or lounge use. The single unit on the first floor really doesn't fit within the character of the building and the use of the building, and she believes that the expansion of the lounge into that area is much more appropriate. And what it does for her and the style of her business, it allows people that don't want to listen to music or the karaoke and want to be able just to sit with their families or their friends and sit upstairs in the top floor or the second floor to watch sports or to just talk with their friends. So that conversion will take place. There's a... It provides right now for a total of 131 patrons, 73 inside, 48 outside, and about 10 employees expected in the premises. Those numbers, however, subject to modification, and if they're modified, it will be reduced rather than increased. And it may be reduced as low as 97 patrons. The reason for that is that as she goes, as Ms. Nguyen goes through the building department phase, there's certain requirements for sprinkler systems and things of that nature that she needs to address, and that therefore may change the total occupancy of the building. As I said, we're seeking a finding to approve the alteration and expansion and also a variance from the parking requirements. One thing that I think that has really improved this facility is the addition of substantial parking. Although the former restaurant Maggie's Lounge and the Washington Tap utilized some parking in the property next door at the liquor store, there was never any formal agreement that we were aware of. So I filed tonight, and I apologize that it was a late filing, but I had directed my client to retain Chi Man, a civil engineer who designed the parking plan. And what that parking plan shows is that in addition to opening up six spaces in the rear of the site and also a handicap space in the front of the site, it also removed the fence between the property line and the abutting property owned by the liquor store. Interestingly, the liquor store that sits on the front of the site has a parking lot on the right, and that is the parking lot that is utilized by its patrons. It also has this excess parking lot in the rear of the site that's not utilized at all by the liquor store, and it provided and allowed for him to lease this space to my client, and she signed and executed a lease. Mr. Chairman, I told you that I was gonna provide that to you tonight, but we... My client forgot to bring it tonight, but we will provide it to the board for your records. But it's an executed lease that allows her to utilize that space. What Chi Man did is he shows on that site that there's up to 14 additional spaces on that particular lot that can be utilized for this property. That then provides for 21 parking spaces for this new use. My client expects this is gonna be a much more family-friendly type of lounge and restaurant, that it's gonna attract families that are gonna come together rather than in separate cars, and she's very confident and comfortable that those 21 spaces are gonna provide for adequate parking for the new facility. We had a neighborhood meeting with the Ward Two City Councilor. I believe two people from the neighborhood came to that meeting. We spoke, we presented them with the proposal. There were very, very few concerns expressed. I know there's a neighbor here that represents the neighborhood across the street. We had a chance to speak with Chuck just a little bit ago, and we responded and answered his concerns as well. This has already appeared before the licensing board, and it has been approved for the license subject to this board's final approval. The hours of operation require that the outside space be closed at 10 o'clock, so that the patio out front and the roof deck will be closed at 10 o'clock. No patrons can continue to stay on that area. Ms. Nguyen told me that she's gonna have security people working within the facility to ensure that people don't hang around the facility after they leave, like people did at Maggie's or maybe even the earlier operations, and they'll also make sure that people leave the outside area. The inside area is allowed, I think by license, to stay open until 1:00 in the morning, although as Ms. Nguyen said to me, it's unlikely that she'll have a lot of patrons in that because it's gonna be more family-style friendly. So that's our presentation. We think this is actually... Oh, and what's also occurring in this is a significant upgrade of the facility as well. There's new signage, there's new exterior siding that's gonna be added to the building. It'll be completely improved with full building plans that she's actually prepared to start right away.
So all the signage, you're gonna... Mr. Duke will take care of all the signage for you that you need under the guideline.
That's right.
Another question I have here is... On here, it says restaurant use, 87 seats. Forty in the first floor, 19 on the second, and the second roof deck, 18. So you've got 37 up, 40 down, and 10 outside. 87. Where are we going, to 131?
Probably my math.
Where's that number?
It's probably my math. I thought I counted 73.
You paid too much to tell me that.
I thought I counted 73 patrons inside. Was I wrong?
I got 87.
Did you initially have 131?
Yes, but we...
We have 87 here.
I didn't know the leader here was here.
87. We got 10 on this, on the print I got. Says 10 on the patio.
Right.
First floor, 40, second floor, 19, and the second rooftop, 18. So at 10 o'clock, you're gonna have 40 seats. The patio will be closed, and the 19 on the second is 59 max after 10 o'clock.
Okay.
Correct.
Those are... Yeah, I apologize for that.
No, no, no.
And those are the numbers, and we've actually had since had further conversation about the sprinkler issue and maybe the need to even downgrade that further, so we'll bring those numbers in compliance. Ms. Alba is here, Alita Alba is here as well, the architect. If there's any particular questions on the plans that you'd like to address, she can certainly address any of those questions.
So this is the existing position, this is the site. As you can see, this is the building. There are existing parking spaces, and there are two parking spaces over here. Existing basement, no changes in there.
Although a lot of these spaces are all overgrown right now.
Yeah, they all are in the back. I know. It's all gonna be done.
So these are just existing floor plans?
Yep.
First floor, second floor. Second floor is just a residential unit right now, one bedroom, kitchen and living room. This is how, in this elevation, that's how the building looks right now. So this is the proposed side layout. You'll have this parking over here. We'll put in a handicap space right on the front. This would be the patio, and we're talking about a small patio. And there's additional parking on this side.
Right. So the fence that divided the lots is coming down.
The adjacent, I think, for property. So this is a better view of the first floor. There's the patio, there's only a few tables out here, so it's just for 10 seating. Dining area with existing bars that say two new bathrooms, which will need handicap requirements, so if these bathrooms don't comply, the kitchen's there pretty much the same.
And although it shows the state, it's gonna be more of a karaoke type of bar, as opposed to loud music and band. We talked to the neighbor about that.
So second floor, we converted it to a dining, small dining area, and outside, we're doing a roof deck on top of the flat part of the building with only like table standing, and then we're putting a new bathroom for just the upstairs. And the elevations, the whole elevations are pretty much the same. It's just like showing the railing here for the new roof deck and the new...
So there'll be new signage?
For new signs, cleanup and paint, but no structural changes.
What's any outside of the building?
There's brick, and there's some kind of spackle there.
What are you gonna put in?
She's gonna have to pressure wash the brick, and this part is gonna... The spackle part is gonna take new spackle. We're gonna put new spackle and then change the windows also, and the floor is gonna be replaced with composite material.
Like how do you plant this up?
Well, it's just column sensation.
No, off top. The second. You're gonna be second floor?
Oh, the second floor. Yeah, the second floor is gonna get 5% more important. Yep.
And what's the menu? I see all these seats, and we're talking about family. What's the menu gonna be?
Do you have a menu?
I don't bring it because we send it to the liquor license, we give it to them.
But what type of food are you gonna serve?
What's on the menu?
It's mixed, because we want to serve the downstairs.
Name and address for the record, please. Come on up.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dawn Nguyen. And address, right?
Yeah, right.
371 North Main Street in Randolph, Mass. 02368.
You got it. Now, what's the menu?
Okay. So I want to serve everybody, pretty much. The downstairs is for people who love to sing. So, yeah, so we sing to each other, and usually it's Asian food, but it mixes up and down. And then we also serve like salad, chicken wings, and hamburgers. So those are for people who upstairs who like to watch sports. So it's a mixture, some Asian and...
Where's the family come in here? What do they get, except for cheeseburgers and...
Oh, no, no. Like, the Asian food is main course. You know, like noodle, fried rice, and...
So it's gonna be like Chinese food?
Yes, yes, yes.
But with an American flair, with like burger?
Upstairs, right.
Yes, yes. But my vision is this, because we... Like, I have a dream, like, I like to have fun too, and I'm a mother, so I don't wanna go to a bar where a young sir and I feel our place, so I wanna create something where like people come in like more elegance, like middle-aged, and people come in like you're in the scene, you wanna release your stress.
Want some money, right? You want some middle-aged with money.
It's okay. We... No, 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 no. We just want to have fun, so we're not here to kill.
Fun and spend money.
Yeah. So I vision, I vision, like, you bring your friends and family to the place, and then people like to, hey, I wanna sit at the patio. Go ahead. Hey, I wanna sing. I want to test out my voice. Go ahead. And I wanna watch sport, but I'm sick of hearing you sing. I can go up to the bar, and I need some fresh air. Let's go to the rooftop.
You sing that bad?
Well, we would like to hear you sing.
We would sing that bad.
Let's hear you sing when you get there. But that's... I just want to create a place where, you know, family can really enjoy, you know?
Grab four or five hamburgers, you might sing better. Right?
Yeah. So this is kind of like not like a regular place where the young sir come, so we don't anticipate any like trouble, because I have a husband and three young kids, so they're gonna pull me out right away. That's why I buy the whole building and the bar, so we under control. And I also have a vision, like, I like to have like parties, where like fundraising party for like the fire department one night would be for fire department, the other night for the police, and another night for whatever, you know? And just celebrate. It's all about coming together and celebrate after COVID. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Anyone?
I have a question for counsel. Could you just explain me in a little bit more detail about the additional parking that's gonna be made available to the owner of this application?
That's the one that came. He just came and gave it tonight. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
This actually, this plan may help us explain it a little bit better.
I understand the location of the spots. My question is, relates to the arrangement that you have, and whether there's a legal arrangement for the use of the abutters parking spaces?
Yes.
Whether that's gonna be a legal arrangement that's recorded, or whether that's simply a gentleman's agreement of some sort?
It's a long... No, it's a written lease, and it's a long-term written lease. And my client, I had indicated, I was gonna bring that and present that to the board tonight, but she had forgotten to bring it tonight. So I will provide that and make sure that Norine has that as part of the package, but it is a long-term signed written lease.
How many years?
How many years?
I thought it's a one-year renewal every year. It's like 12 months renewal every year.
Why one year?
He's thinking of maybe he will cut out the land and maybe buy it sale to us. That's why, that's why he don't...
Too many for a five-year lease wouldn't matter, he's still back out because he's gonna sell it to you, so what's that gonna do with it? To me, I'd feel better with a five-year lease.
Is it your option to extend?
I think so. He just said options to extend.
So it's a one-year lease?
One-year, one-year lease. I'm sorry. I thought she had... Because we had talked about a five-year lease, and so it's a one-year lease with renewable options.
At first, he said five-year lease, and then later, he said that he may change the cut out of the land because he has too many land on the side for the liquor store already. So that's why he's like, why don't we just do a one-year lease with option to renew every year?
Counselor, one last question. How many spaces are you relying upon for that lease to be effective?
So we had, we retained Chi Man, and Chi Man laid out 14 additional spaces on that parcel.
And how many are on the main parcel?
There's seven. Six in the rear of the site and then one handicap in the front.
Seven and 14.
No, eight.
Eight?
I think seven plus a handicap.
Oh, I'm sorry, eight. She said...
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions?
Let's hear from the public. I have a few questions about the lease. They thought we had a long-term lease there, a box. Maybe we can fix that. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? You don't want to speak in favor of this? Pageant?
Yes, sir.
Name and address for the record, please.
Charles Palmer, 23 Hershey Place.
How does it work?
So we're... I'm definitely that get-off-the-porch type person, get off my front lawn, but we had a lot of issues with Maggie's and with late-night loitering. After speaking with the owner of this property, I sort of have the ear of the street, and I don't believe there's gonna be issues with us at all, as long as the patios are closed at 10. They have some security and there's no loitering after they close, so we're saying we're in favor of it.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Second call? Third call?
There's an active note on the back.
You can pass those off now, don't you?
Yeah, I know, I can pass those off.
We have reviewed the above submitted for the above referenced project, and our comments are as follows. The existing paving on Washington Street was repaved in 2018. There's a five-year moratorium for any digging on the new street. Specify how much interior area will be increased due to the development. Provide plan showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility grading and drainage, and upon completion of the project, add build plan showing all utilities and building footprint need to be submitted along with the digital file.
There's another one on that regarding utilities.
Existing utilities may be upgraded for a restaurant. We need to see the utility plan existing and proposed for review. Any grease remediation plan and any fire suppression system being installed. How big is the restaurant?
Is there anyone who called up party here and closed? Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Who stepped forward, state your name and address for the record, please. Wait till you get to the mic.
My name is Jack Mayo. I'm a resident of Quincy Pointe. I live on Clermont Avenue. I've been there for about 57 years, and...
What number on Clermont?
16.
Thank you. Would you state it for the record?
I'm opposed to this. All I keep thinking, I'm not a kid anymore. I'm 83 years old now. A couple of years ago, we had a big discussion here regarding a pawn shop, and that did not fly. Now, we've got a marijuana shop down at the circle, and now it appears to me that we're putting a nightclub 500 yards away. I know they're calling this all sorts of wonderful things, families this and family that, and it's gonna be such a sweet out of a place, but you know what? If it quacks like a duck and it looks like a duck, it's a duck, and that's the way I look at it. This, I think we're being sold a bill of goods here that I do not think is fair to the residents of the neighborhood because they don't know what they're getting. And we're getting a nightclub. That's what we're getting there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. Is there anyone else? Opposed or undecided?
Second call?
John Roderfeld, 62 Grand Wall Road. My idea is this, is they're asking for a lot and they haven't opened yet, so maybe let them open and then come back and ask for a roof deck, see how they do as an operator. Without the roof deck, you know, there's definitely more parking here than they have at the marijuana place, even though the marijuana place will probably do 100 times more business. But it definitely... It's definitely gonna be worse than Maggie's, you know? So I mean, I don't... I see this as being as, you know, a one-year lease there for that other parking if they did have more parking. There's just no place to put extra cars on that street and stuff, so I mean, temporarily, they're gonna open up. They can try, they can see what they do there, but it is... I do feel bad for the neighbors who live near there. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Although we do need happy, fun places in Quincy.
Is there anyone else? Last call? Call that party here and close. Oh, yeah, I have a letter here, like to put into the record.
Jim Coniff, 109 Curtis Ave. My name is Jim Coniff. I live directly across the street from Maggie's. In the past, we had multiple issues with the marijuana, the noise that comes from there. Now they wanna widen the scope of changes. They forget the fact that nobody wants...
Can you hear you?
Sorry, forget the fact that nobody wants a bar in the neighborhood. This is a very bad idea to reopen a problem that does not exist in our neighborhood. I know that they will promise to have cops there all the time and that they will monitor the music, et cetera. They are like many others who will commit to anything if only you let them operate. Where's all the parking gonna be? Our parking lot has been this way, has been the way they play it. Our building makes for great echoing. Motorcycle comes to the specific spot, revs up bikes. Will this become a new bikey bar? That's all we need to read.
Thank you.
Thank you. Call up party here and close. I have a problem with the parking. One-year parking lease is, to me, is just useless. One year don't mean nothing, and all of a sudden, you sell the property next door. You know, we're stuck with Maggie's with seven spots on Washington Street. Is it going to work for you? Probably wouldn't. You'd probably be out of business if you didn't have your parking. But that's not up to us. See if you're going to make it there or not. I'm not ready to vote on this, number one, with an upstairs deck and the parking that's not finished. So if this can be put off, that's just me. We all got our own two cents here. Mr. Vice Chair, how do you feel about it?
Yeah, I mean, when I looked at it, I almost kind of chuckled. I've been to Maggie's a number of times. I just figured that there was never going to be another place. I mean, I like improving the area, but it's just, I mean, the parking plan's nice. But without any more consistency, it's hard to approve it.
Mr. Hamer, anything?
Yeah, one year with renewable is a little unworkable. You're right, the guy could drop dead and sell the property. I also don't like this pod stage thing in the karaoke area. I don't think, I don't think that's necessary. But the short-term lease on the parking, I find problematic.
I agree with comments means parking.
Yeah, my question.
All right. So one or two things. We want to take out the deck. And you want that parking, come back with a five-year lease? Then they can open up or not? Or just not at all? That's our call, too. I feel if they don't have an upstairs outside deck, that'll calm down everything. Everything will be inside the building because of six or seven, there's only 10 people can sit out front. Now, if there's 20 people out front and you call up, then the licensing board gets involved. There's seating for 10 people, not 20 or 30 people out front. And it's covered by headings. So if you could do that, take the upstairs deck off there. Everything's inside except for the people that want to go outside and get some air. I don't know who wants to sit in Washington Street and suck fumes, but go ahead. You know? Everything will be inside and fix that parking. Maybe we could have a plan. I don't know what you guys think.
They could always come back for the deck, right? If they...
Yeah, later on. They come back if they're doing good for three years, everything's good, or two years, everything's good. Come back and say, you know, worry about the deck now. And then, you know, then we got to look at it. How's it been running? How's that going on? A deck, I think that's a problem. To me, a problem, a deck's a problem. You just start drinking at a social bar upstairs and all of a sudden you're up, and you're up above people. You yell, it goes out and down. There's neighbors in there.
Yeah, takes your occupancy down to what, 69, 68?
Still fine.
Except there's only four tables on the...
Eighteen seats on the deck.
On the deck, yeah. The deck we can hold off on. But let's do something with that parking and make sure we got a viable reason for parking. And that guy's willing to agree to sign it and put it in, put it in as a document with us. Yeah?
Yeah.
Counsel, your call. You got where we're at.
That's very agreeable. My client's certainly willing to consider eliminating the deck. And she'll talk with the landlord next door about whether or not she can extend the lease to a five-year lease. I apologize that I stated it was long-term. My understanding it was that I had...
That's what I thought it was, too.
I thought it was a five-year lease. So we're going to talk to the landlord about a five-year lease.
All right. And the 14th, we can do June 14th if you're ready.
June 14th is great.
All right. June 14th, can I motion, please?
Thank you.
Mr. Jim, case ZBA 22-27, 609 Washington Street LLC for finding variance to extend the business use on the premise by converting the second floor of the premise from residential use to commercial use and construct a roof deck on the flat roof section of the building along with a patio on the front lawn area for outside seating on the premises numbered 609 Washington Street. I make a motion to move that hearing to...
June 14th.
Tuesday, June 14th, 2022.
Okay.
On the motion? Seeing that all in favor? All right, close.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further on the tonight's agenda. ZBA 2220, Shawna Landry for finding special permit floodplain to construct an addition on premises 76 Spring Streets. The applicant representative here.
Gentlemen, lady, madam secretary, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, first let me apologize for wearing a hat.
Not at all.
My dermatologist is trying to scalp me, even though I've lost most of my hair. And it's not very good to look at. So other than that, we're here to talk about... Thank you. I'm here with, I'm the architect on this project. And I'm representing Shawna Landry. Her father is here, Paul Landry, in her absence. We're both experienced zoning commissioners and building commissioners historically. We're both retired. I don't know if any of the members have had a chance to view the property.
Yep.
If you have, then you're familiar with it. But I brought these pictures in case anybody hasn't been by the property.
Now, that's our job. We go by every piece of property.
Very good. Okay. On the plan, I just want to point out that the footprint, the blue that you see here in outline, is the existing footprint of the house.
Right.
And the orange is what we anticipate to do for the addition. Just push it to the left. This is actually a double lot.
Yeah.
And we're going to take advantage of that and go that way. So the only encroachment is on the front, yeah, setback, which we're extending. It already exists, but we're just extending it to the left. The, go ahead, turn it. I don't know if the plans that you have are identical to what I brought.
I hope they are.
They better be. I tried to profile the existing profile, the existing house in red. And then superimpose that with the new profile. The new, basically, it's going to be like a salt box. You know, preserve the existing pitch of the existing roof line. Just carry it up and add the new bedrooms on that side, the new living room on that left side of the house. We're not going to encroach any further towards the wetland in the back, except with the exception of the deck. We do have to do conservation. We had a couple of footings that we had to put in there for that, so.
We're good.
Pretty much.
Thank you. You can have a seat. Any questions?
Could you tell me where you're going to park?
Yeah, I was going to say driveway.
Yeah. The whole parking piece.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone here like to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Counsel, you want to speak? I know you do.
Dave McCarthy, Ward Run Council, 48 Whitney Road. I met with Shawna several weeks ago and went over this. I thought it was a nice addition going out on the left side. Spring Street, as the board knows, is very tight. The houses are all tight. But she has that double lot. And she's leaving a lot of space between her and the folks to her left. I think it's a nice addition and I'm glad they want to add on and stay. So it should work out.
Lucky to have their counsel here. Thanks for coming, counsel. Is there anyone else like to speak in favor? Last call? Call our party hearing closed. We have a letter here from DPW. Can you read it to the record?
We have reviewed the above reference project, and our comments are as follow. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased due to the development. Two, will there be any fill or change of grade due to the development? Three, the dimensions and grades for the paving area and all driveway entrances. Four, the submittal package should generally provide a plan denoting the proposed erosion and sediment control practices to be implemented during the construction phase of the project to protect resource areas. Five, upon completion of the project, add build plan showing all utilities and building footprint needs to be submitted along with the digital file. An elevation certificate should also be submitted if the property is in a flood zone.
Call our party hearing closed. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call? Second call? Third call? Call our party hearing closed. I think it's a beautiful addition. It's going to look nice. Right on the wall, they're going to love it. I'll be voting yes.
In favor, I like that they didn't increase really that much on the side that they were already existing. It's so close. It was well-designed. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it fits right in. Very nice. In favor.
I'm in favor. Likewise.
Can I motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, case ZBA 22-20, Shawna Landry for a finding special permit floodplain to construct an addition on the premise numbered 76 Spring Street and make a motion to grant the finding special permit floodplain.
Second.
On the motion? Seeing that all in favor? All right, opposed? So moved. All set. And counsel, you're here for one more, correct? Bayview Ave?
Dunkin' Donuts.
Oh, Dunkin' Donuts, too.
No, I'm taking time.
All the time tonight, counsel.
All right, let's hold on to Beale Street for a minute. We can move this to the council. 55 Bayview Ave. Michael Monahan for variance to subdivide the lot into two lots and construct a single-family home on the newly created lot, premises 55 Bayview Ave, ZBA 2236.
Hi, Chairman. I'm Michael Monahan, 50 Hillside Ave, Quincy. And I'm representing Shaw, who owns the house, to propose subdividing the lot, making two lots, obviously, and building a new home on the newly created lot.
All right. Why did you bring it so close to that other lot to put their pavement right on your lot? Like, why didn't you give it some room? Those poor people got 3,900, and they're taking 66. I'd rather, just personally, see what the board thinks. Why we didn't move that lot line another six feet or something and give them some room in that piece? You know, you're going to do this house all over, you're saying, correct?
The existing house will be renovated, correct?
That's going to be all done and renovated.
Yeah.
And then try to maybe cheat a couple of feet if we could on the side?
From the 13?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bring that over. Not cheat there, cheat on the 25 side.
Right. So we'll increase the 13?
Yeah, yeah.
Increase to 24 or 25.
Right, right, right. And just move it, I don't know, give them, don't you think it's tight like you, by the time they put the cars in, they're right up against the fence, so.
So the reason why that was done, 13, is the setback on a corner lot?
I know with the 25, I know what you're trying to do. And you're trying to make your house 28 feet wide. I understand all that. When you, you know, the house could be 24 wide and 40 long, too, but 50 long, so. I don't know why you didn't do that myself. But you've got a huge lot there, that's for sure, a huge lot. Ever since I've been a kid, that lot's has been there. That lot's been there, right. That's a lot of years that lot's been there. A lot of years. A lot of years. Used to try to play in that lot, but there's too much stuff in it. But I don't know, what do you think, guys? If we could move that, just, I don't know, five, at least five more feet, six more feet, and then take a couple of feet off each side in the end or something, I mean. Move it five feet and then take the 25 to 20 on the side and make, it's a side street you're coming up anyway. Even though it's a corner lot, it's like you're going down a side street. You all been there, of course, Ratchford Street. So the house would be 20 feet there instead of 25.
We can certainly do that, yeah.
Move this lot line five feet out.
Yeah. And then move that 25, 24, 5 to, you know, 19, 5. So they're 20 feet off the sidewalk plus they get a nice yard. These people get a little more when they buy the house, the kids, you know.
Was that the intention? You were trying to create the most conforming law you could have based?
Yeah, that was what we were trying to do, yeah.
So what do you think? Five feet, is that good or not?
It's, we're in residential A down there.
I know, yeah. So what I'm trying to do is make this little teeny lot, which they have nothing on the other side. And they're going to have cars up here. They got a back, but if they can get five more feet, that house is already done. I mean, they got five more feet there.
Someplace to throw the snow.
Yeah, yeah. So it is yard, yeah. See what I'm saying? We could move that lot line where it is. It's over five feet. Move the other one to 19, 5. And the house, the same thing, it's just moved over five feet.
And the front stays the same.
Everything's going to stay the same. Everything stays the same, yeah. See what I'm thinking?
These people talking, shifting this, this is so...
Five feet to the right, that's all. And then take five feet off the, give them a variance for the side setback, 19, 5. You're still 20 feet off the street, which is, some of, they were eight on the street and some of them up Ratchford. If you go down Ratchford.
Feet on the lot, too.
I know. Right.
3,400, 2,400 square feet makes the mobile reasonable.
Well, yeah, and it goes, and it goes up and down around, 500, so it'd be 44, up to 4,400, you know, and 6,000, right?
Yeah.
And it's more centered.
And it's, yeah, and it's kind of, it gives them room and he's got still a perfect light there for a nice house. Yeah, we're going to hear it.
We can prove it with that, right?
Yeah, 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 we can do that. We can change that with that. We just tell the people what we're doing as far as moving the lot line five feet. Anything else you want to add?
Nothing else.
Anything happen to the existing residence?
That house that's here now?
Yeah.
We're going to eventually renovate that after this is done.
Okay.
Yeah. But nothing, not tearing it down like we're not doing.
New windows, new siding, new everything, yep. I know the council have talked about it. You're going to be fixing up that house for the neighborhood before you sell that one, correct?
Correct.
Any questions? All right. Does anyone want to speak in favor? First call? You can have a seat, thank you. Second call? Anyone want to speak in favor? Guess you got no friends. Third call? Where's your posse? Call our party hearing closed. We have a letter here from the DPW.
We have reviewed this submittal for the above reference project, and our comments are as follows. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased due to the development. Two, provide plan showing the existing site conditions. Layout of utility grading, drainage, and the construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, provide dimensions and grades for the paving area and all driveway entrances. Five, upon completion of the project, add build plan showing all utilities and building footprints need to be submitted along with the digital file. An elevation certificate should also be submitted if the property's in a flood zone.
Thank you. Call our party hearing closed. Anyone opposed or undecided, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is James Doherty. 64 Bayview Ave. I'm directly across the street. And I'm very much opposed to it. I don't think there's any need to crowd the area anymore. It was always a beautiful lot. And I've been delivering papers down there for the last 80 years as a young boy. And it was very, very nice. It was owned by a person that took care of Royal Royces cars. And it was always a lovely, lovely lot. And there's no need to crowd it out and it should be left as it is right now vacant, except to remove the trucks that are there that have been used as a snow plowing and other equipment that's left there all year long. And that never should have happened.
That's what I like to see done. You're right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call?
Just very quickly. My name's Maura Doherty. 190 Rock Island Road. And I am opposed to this. That lot is held, Mrs. Lovell's lot, Mrs. Lovell's house, has been one house for over my almost 60 years. And the same question came up about 15 years ago before this board. Bifurcating the lot, building a new one, and there was no hardship stated. So the result that the board concluded was no. There's two reasons why the answer should still be no. Nothing has changed. It's the same lot. It's the same house. It's the same owner. And there is still no hardship stated. It's not like Mr. Landry's house that we just heard about on Spring Street, which is down by me. They're building an addition. It's not like 9 Newton that we heard earlier, too. They're raising the house and building new construction. Both are those, both things are things that we want to have in our neighborhood. This is building a new house and cramming it in next to an existing house. This is at a T intersection, as you stated earlier. It's Ratchford Street and Bayview Ave. It's very dense there already. It's dense at the end down at 70 Bayview Ave. It's really difficult to walk on any sidewalk with the equipment. We, it's nothing against the owner. It's just there's no hardship. to say no, because I'm concerned what this precedent is going to do for my end of the woods, um, with, with other lots. And if you allow, if you allow a, a neighbor to cram in another new house, a totally new house, next to an existing one, it's not an addition, it's not raising the house and building a new one, it just in, increases the amount of density, we lose more trees, we lose more space, and we're, excuse me, and we're kind of tight down the neck to begin with. So I just ask you to consider the fact that there is no hardship, and this is based on what you have done before, for the same exact situation. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have, anyone else opposed or undecided? I have two letters here, could we read it to the record? Oh, wait a minute, there's one more.
Name and address, you're right.
Hi, my name's Kathy Ann Shea Heinz, and I live on fifty-four Bayview Ave. I live right across the street from this house. Excuse me, I'm opposed to this splitting the lot for a few reasons. One, as I said before, it's a nice lot, they take good care of it. Having a yard, whether it's a side yard, a backyard, or a front yard in Howes Neck, is a huge advantage to anyone. For Mike Monahan to wanna split this lot, I can't believe he would do that, having grown up in Howes Neck. If he wants to take a cottage and tear it down and buy, and build a new house, let him do that. There's a beautiful house on Edgewater Drive he can buy, and have ocean view, he could buy that. Why split a lot and have two houses side by side with less than twenty-four, twenty-five feet between them? I don't get it, I'm against this.
But who said there's gonna be less than twenty-four feet between? That's not true at all.
Excuse me?
That's not true at all.
What's not true?
Probably gotta be thirty-five feet between.
What I'm saying is you have an existing house with a huge side yard.
Exactly.
That's an advantage, that if Sean Farrell doesn't want this house and this land anymore, then Sean should sell the house and the land, and give it to a family that would want the house and the land, and bring it up for family cookouts, outings, whatever. Having a yard is a big advantage, I find, in Howes Neck. Most of the houses are right on top of each other, you can hear the conversation of the person beside you, just sitting in your backyard.
Most lots in Howes Neck are under five thousand square feet, correct? Right.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you. Anyone else opposed or undecided? Call up out of hearing close, and I do understand that very much. And I also understand that the house that's gonna be put there is only twenty by forty feet, it's not this huge, humongous house. And if it was any bigger, I, I probably would've said no, uh, personally, in my, my opinion, but, that lot there has looked horrendous for the last five years, no offense. It's disgusting what you did to that piece of property. It was the most beautiful piece of property in Howes Neck, and you parked junk in it and just junked, and it really, it upset me very much, to the point that I asked the city, why does he have his, his commercial vehicles in that yard all the time? Shouldn't be there. Not the ones done, of course, but they can outlook, clean them up for a week, and then it's back again, so. Not that I'm your friend, Mr. Monahan, I'm not, I don't like what you did to the property, I don't like the way you took care of it, but I understand what you wanna do with the property. And, and thinking that it's a piece of property, it's gonna be six thousand, over, little over six thousand square feet, uh, it's gonna have a beautiful backyard, a nice side yard, a nice front yard, and the people next door are gonna have a bigger yard, too. So that's the only reason I'm vo- I'm voting in favor. And, and that house there, if there was one foot bigger, I'd probably say no, and I wanna move that lot line five, give the people that buy that house plenty of room for their, for their kids, and go up and down beside the cars in their yard, too, so they get more room. And then I think that would look very nice down there, and I think it'd be great. And I, I apologize for one thing, council, I forgot you.
Let me have a read these out. Thank you.
Uh, Dave McCarty, forty-eight Whitney Road, world one councillor. I understand what Chairman Akers is saying about the size, uh, down the neck, it, everything, but, everybody is about five thousand, fifty, five hundred square feet. This lot has, as everybody said, it's been empty forever. It's a corner lot, uh, it's very sizable, it can handle this house. I'd like to make sure there's conditions that if the board votes in favor that there aren't any more trailers, bobcats, plows, any of that stuff. And also, that that second house that's there now, um, or the first house that's there now, does get done over, 'cause that's starting to look a little blighted.
Real blighted.
Uh, in regards to the, uh, outside, I don't know about the inside of the house on Bayview Ave, and, um, as the folks stated, majority of those houses on Bayview Ave, people take good care of them, and they've been on.
Exceptional work.
Bayview Ave for ever. So, uh, um, I, I think that the lot is big enough to take this. I, I like the idea of moving a little bit to adjust it, um, but I'd love to see the board make sure that there's no more construction stuff at all on the street, on Ratchford, no trailers. I know I've dealt with Mr. Duca a few times, and we've moved it, and then, you know, a few weeks later, it moves back, so. Thank you.
Thank you, council. And I have two letters to read into the record. They, uh, not, they didn't speak, they did.
Kathleen Tracy, fifty Bayview.
No.
Name's Kathleen Tracy, fifty Bayview Ave, I was unable to find, uh, sorry, unable to attend, um, land's owned by Sean Farrell, has already tried, I believe, twice to subdivide the land and build, both times was denied. Property has people in the neighborhood have always been told, contains a large MWRA pipe that deems it an unbuiltable lot. It is concerning and strange knowing that, that knowing this, Mr. Farrell and Mr. Monahan would attempt to go through with it yet again. Also, in the seventeen years or more that Mr. Farrell's owned the property, has failed to make a single repair or update to the home that is currently occupied by renters. Shows lack of care and respect for the people of the neighborhood, there have been many projects allowed in our small neighborhood in the past eighteen months, most of them done by individuals who don't live in there and have to deal with the impact. Several of these projects were opposed by the people in the neighborhood, were allowed anyways, with due respect and consideration of the board's take into account the neighborhood's opinion on these projects.
Second one?
Christine Remenuits, sixty-five Bayview Ave. I'm ready to strongly oppose this splitting of the property, fifty-five Bayview Ave and Howes Neck, in order to build another house, adding another house to that area that only adds to the more cars. As they build two new houses on the corner, it sometimes can be dreadful, because if you're turning onto C Street from Bayview Ave, the car parked along the street, it's difficult to make the turn, especially if another car is turning onto Bayview from C Street. Several years ago, we wanted to split our own lot in order for our son to build a home next to us, and your board rejected his request because they didn't want to lose all the green space in the neighborhood. Even though we would've met all the requirements, needed to build it, we still rejected. Therefore, we thought, green space you wanted for Howes Neck. I do not see how the very yard on the very next corner from us should be treated differently. We enjoy looking at the open area and the green grass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call up out of hearing close. So you're stating that, that, when are you gonna be doing this, the second house? So the first house that's here, when are you gonna be doing that over?
Do that one out, do that. Right out of there.
I wanna get my tents out of there, because they're, they're the ones that owns all the bobcats and all that, and all the other things. Get the stuff, I own my own construction here in Quincy.
Yeah.
I think everyone knows that. So, and he just won't get the stuff out of there, and that's why I'm.
Don't you just throw them out?
It's not as easy as that.
No, it ain't. Got a lease, every year you ask them to move it, you don't move it, you throw them out, you get someone else in there that's not gonna put garbage in there for the people that live there. It's not fair, it's really not fair. It's not fair for a long time what's happened to that lot. So how do I know, what are you gonna tell us, in this hearing, in front of everyone, what you're gonna do and when that house is gonna be finished? Give me a timetable.
Um, probably about a year and a half, total, between both of them.
All right.
Just as soon as I get them out, I'm gonna pull the permit and remodel it and fix up the old house.
Well, you're gonna sell them both, right?
I'm not sure yet. I'm serious, I'm not sure yet. I don't wanna say yes or no, I'm not sure. I keep it on a property.
Well, if you're gonna get renters like that, I hope you sell the properties, because I don't think they want it down there, the people that you rent to. My opinion, I'll be voting in favor. As long as we do those changes, and he's gonna fix the yard house in a year and a half.
Hard to counsel, or, or, what's this?
Counsel?
Chairman, uh, just to, uh, on top of that, should we get the equipment out of there, like?
Like now? Yeah.
Yeah, you know, just all of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna wait a year and a half?
We got two weeks, get it out? All right. And if not, I'll be asking Mr. Duca to send down a guy to find you every day, right, Mr. Duca?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Duca.
How's that, also Dave, good idea?
Yeah.
Yeah. Comments?
I have a question.
Yeah.
I would like to hear from the applicant regarding the, the actual hardship, because there isn't anything in the documentation.
Go ahead.
That, that states why he needs to do this.
I don't give that much thought, but, um, I'm not really sure on the hardship part of it. Do you have any comments, huh?
I know if I develop it, I'd get that tenant out of there, he won't, he won't have room for all this stuff, he'd be kicked out.
But why is he there?
Why apparently moved in ten years ago and know, know, know nothing, it keeps filling the area? I've complained so many times, he gets out of there, and he changes.
And when he's supposed to fill his lease again next year, when you raise the rent, why don't you just say, I'm not signing, you're out of here? You don't have a lease with him?
I don't have a lease with him.
Then get him out tomorrow. Right?
Yep.
You and your stuff, gone. The board says, I'm building a new house, your stuff's gone. I mean, if it, really, you got two weeks, it's gonna be costing you a hundred, three hundred, five hundred, nine hundred. You get that kind of money, good luck to you, and we'll put it on the neighborhood council, we'll need some extra money for you, right, Mr. Duca? There you go. No hardship, that's your answer. All right. I'm still voting in favor.
The second letter referenced an MWRA pipe, are you aware of that, Mr. McCarty?
It runs down Ratchford. Um, you know, it comes down, uh, the berm across the wreck and down C Street, and then banks are left on Ratchford by the back of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. But doesn't go through this lot?
Runs down across, uh, center, oh, center, Harold, just see. Central, central, the park, and then hits the berm, goes across Brill Field, so, the proximity of where that is, I'm not sure on, on the lot, you know.
It's on Ratchford Street, it's not on the property.
I'd ask them to take a look at that, too, just to, you know.
Mr. Duca?
See if I'm.
Mr. Duca will, I mean, if, if things are, they can't be moving.
I'm looking, sure, I'm looking.
Okay.
If, if there was a pipe there, it had to be an easement, there is no easement on that property.
Right, thanks.
So the pipe goes down the road, and it's.
Pipe's big, pipes the berm, pipe, pipe, it's always through, it's in that alley, so, I'd wanna make sure that i- i- if the board votes in favor, that, you know, they, make sure they pay attention, plus, we talked to the MWRA, with the.
Yeah, there's twenty-six inch pipe.
Construction on that side, Ratchford.
Twenty-six inch pipe going on Ratchford Street.
Okay, so it's not on the lot, as was stated in that letter, okay. Thank you.
For the board's indication, if all the construction has to, put a dig save, and then it'll be, till then.
Thanks, Mr. Duca, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, you're welcome.
Any comments?
I mean, I, I hate splitting lots, especially making two non-conforming lots, it just, it just bothers me. So, I don't know, I'm, I'm struggling with this one.
All right.
Yeah, I'm kinda torn, too, only because you hate to create two non-conforming lots, but, on the other hand, you take a look at the current condition of that with all the crap in it.
But ownership's not changing.
No.
You hope it does.
I, ownership is not changing.
I know, you hope it is.
No. Thirty-day, issue a thirty-day notice to quit, and you sit in court for two years.
I'm, I'm opposed to the application, because there's no hardship, number one.
All right.
Number two, this is resident A.
Yep.
I denied a one-sixty-inch furnace brick, the division of that lot, which was about the same size, um, on the same, for the same reasons.
But that was on a corner, too, that was on that.
This is on a corner, too, but be that as it may, just because the lot is blighted and he's intending to fix it, is not good reason to give him a variance. It shouldn't be blighted in the first place.
I just always believed there should be a house on that corner lot, it looks, it looks weird down the neck, it's the only one there.
Beautiful master house, right in the middle of it.
Used to be nice, I would, I would, exactly.
If there's, if there's something that the neighborhood all agrees to, in terms of scope, dimension, timing, I would reconsider, but as of right now, I, I would not, I would not approve.
Okay. Phil Bryant?
I'm opposed, there's a lot of live, single families in that area, and that's a lot that would look nice with a live, single-family home on.
In the middle.
Yeah.
It'll look gorgeous. Beautiful lot, gorgeous lot.
That's what I was looking at, I was looking at the map, and it's like all ten thousand square.
All right. Two things we can do, we can vote on it, or you can just pull, pull your application. It's not gonna pass.
We'll pull it?
Yeah, we'll pull it. Any motion of, uh, withdrawal without prejudice?
This is Chairman KZBA, twenty-two dash thirty-six, Michael Monahan, for a variance to subdivide the lot into two lots and construct a single-family home on the newly-created lot on premises number fifty-five Bayview Avenue, I make a motion to allow for withdrawal without prejudice.
Second.
On the motion? Seeing that all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Close, the move. Thank you.
Thank you.
GBA twenty-two thirty-two, DDP Realty LLC, for a variance to install new signs on Dunkin' Donuts, numbered five forty-three Southern Otry, yep. Counsel, you're up.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, Edward Fleming for, uh, DDP Realty LLC. I'm joined, uh, by its principals, Victor and Octavio Cavalo. Victor and Octavio own a number of Dunkin' Donuts within the city, including the first Dunkin', um, on Washington Street. But they've owned, uh, this original Dunkin' Donut facility for a number of years, uh, and operated at this location in five forty-three Southern Otry. Uh, every once in a while, Dunkin' reaches out to them, um, and wants them to, and wants them and, and other Dunkin' operators to make changes to the signage in the facility and the setup of the facility. Dunkin' reached out to them and obviously wants to honor the original Dunkin' Donuts with some signage that's a little different than what the city has, is used to, um, and therefore, it requires us to appear before this, this body. What Dunkin' is, is proposing at this, uh, the original Dunkin' Donuts facility, is to have, basically, they're cleaning the, the existing sign, Dunkin', Dunkin' Donuts sign, and they're adding the original Dunkin' Donut under it. But they're also adding a separate logo, which indicates that it was established in nineteen fifty. Our ordinance, the way it's drawn, allows for three signage, signs on buildings, um, to, um, to identify the building. What it doesn't allow is different types of signs. So because Dunkin' Donuts sign is different than the nineteen fifties, and because of the size that's shown there, uh, it requires variances from the sign ordinance. Uh, this is, uh, Bill Gavigan, uh, from Point Signs is here tonight as well, if there's any particular questions about the signage. Uh, we think it's very tastefully done. Um, they're actually already starting to work on the initial, on the, uh, original sign, all they were doing is taking it out, cleaning it up, changing some of the lighting, um, and adding that initial, uh, original Dunkin' signage, but they haven't moved forward on the nineteen fifties, established in nineteen fifties logo yet. But that's what we're seeking tonight, is a variance from Title Seventeen, Section five point three of the, of the ordinance for signs.
Counsel, what do you need this big giant nineteen fifty for? Why couldn't they put it like right underneath there, or something like, nineteen fifty?
They wanna make it clear to everyone that it was established in nineteen fifty, and it's been here since nineteen fifty. here since 1950. Again, I, I think it's done tastefully, I understand the size is, uh, is maybe bigger than, um, than, uh, otherwise, but I think they just really wanna promote the fact that the, that Dunkin' has been, um, has been in the city of Quincy since 1950, and they're proud of their, um, their, uh, their being here for so long.
What thing, 40 square feet?
It's big, but if you remember what was there before, there were, there were banners, but there were banners. I think there were banner-type signs there in the past, and those were allowed under the ordinance, um, and, uh, really what they wanna do is replace those banners with this, with this tasteful signage. And again, it, it's really honoring the history, I mean, we, we in Quincy of all places wanna honor history, and I think one of the, one of the things that we should be very proud of in the city of Quincy is the commercial history that we have by the granite industry and the, you know, and the shipping.
So we get rid of Dunkin' Donuts, say Quincy's first Dunkin'.
Shipbuilding and, well.
Quincy's the first Dunkin'.
Established in 1950? You call it.
Scrappy?
The original.
Are these scrappy?
The original, the original.
It's the original. Established 1950. All right, I guess, I don't know. Now, how big's the other one here? What is this, the regular Dunkin', that's the same one going right back?
That's right. It's simply being cleaned and replaced, uh, new lighting being added to it, I apologize, I thought I.
That's the only, that's the only lighting, right? Is just on that, the main Dunkin', is, uh, or established.
There's lighting on the 1950, well, can you just highlight that?
I thought I read that it wasn't, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, Bill Gavigan, uh, with Pointed Signs, um, 7 Farmstead Lane, Ellington, Connecticut. Um, yeah, on, on the signage, there is, there's, I guess, two, two signs that we're seeking relief for, the established 1950, um, really kinda trying to reinforce that it's the very first of, of every Dunkin' Donuts, um, and then also there is a cup silhouette that is more of a, a structure, um, that has.
Definitely something like that.
Yeah, it, it's off the, looking at the building, it'd be the far-right side, um, would be attached to the face and then goes over the parapet and attaches, um, to a structure we're gonna build from, from the roof.
I'm missing something here, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Yeah.
There's two signs, there's Dunkin' Donuts, and it said established 1950.
It's the 1950s, and then.
That's it, two, right?
Cup as well, that's right, I, I.
Where's the cup?
There it is. And it's drak, I hope.
Is it, uh, is it not in the, uh, not in the back?
I don't see it, no, I saw two signs.
No, it's not there.
It should be the last, I believe the last.
That's bad, I didn't have to go there, I thought you had the before.
The last would be before the 1950s.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you have the view of it, it's just, it's a, it's side.
Ten.
No, yeah, come on.
A lot of approach to that shit.
It's down here, 24-inch, it's a little right there, it's a cup silhouette and it comes, sorry. If you zoom into the elevation, you can see it a little bit better. It, it matches the, the parapet above the storefront, there's some white and some pink.
Well, you're taking that all down right now, that, that parapet's being taken out, it's a flat wall.
They're redoing a whole facade right now. I think this, I'm sorry, this, this shows a little bit.
And that's all those colors, all those colors on it?
You know, close shot.
It's, it's the last painting. It shows that it's basically, um, it, uh.
This thing goes all the way? This whole thing?
So, right, right, right here?
Yeah.
Above the Dunkin', or on the sides, actually, you have the pink and the white lights that wrap around it, it's two lines along the, on both sides of the letters that goes around the side, and then the cup itself has a matching outline light, it's, it's essentially, it's, it's contour lighting, it's a GE product.
What is all that?
That's to show you what that product looks like, we did that at the, uh, student union, um.
That's what we're gonna have on our main drag?
It's similar, just to show you what it would look like, it's not gonna look like that, the design is completely different, but to show you that it looks like neon, it's got a neon illumination look to it, but it's, it's, it's.
But, I mean, how, how, how long are these colors? How, how, how many feet are these colors, pink and stuff, going?
I'm sorry, you have. Ten feet tall, right?
That's on established, it's 10 feet, right? Dunkin's bigger than that, it's gonna be 18 feet or something.
Yeah, it's on each side of the, of the Dunkin', and then it wraps down the outside corner and goes back as well. If you zoom in, it shows it better, it's, the stroke, the light itself is seven-eighth inch, it's very thin, where we actually have it on a two-inch piece of channel, just so during the day, you can see the colors a little bit better.
He's heightened, right? This one here.
Because it's such a thin lot. I mean, obviously.
Around the rim.
It's a very nice looking type.
10, 10.
So the actual Dunkin' Donuts is set up as well, or is that?
And white.
Dunkin' Donuts is a little, it's the same.
White, it's the white, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just.
And then the neon just kinda reflects on the wall.
Yeah, it's actually on the sides.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And how big, how big is the neon on it, on each side?
On each side, it's a seven-eighth inch stroke, and we're looking at.
The cup's 10 feet tall.
Yeah, you got about nine feet, yeah, nine feet to the left, uh, five feet to the right, and then about 10 feet to the sides, on that one side.
You, you got nine feet to the left of Dunkin' Donuts, why do you have only five feet on the right to the Dunkin' Donuts?
Just the way that.
It looks weird.
What's that?
I know, it's weird.
I don't know, I'm not a lighting worker. You're the electrician, right?
Yeah, you'd have, you'd have the sign in the middle of the lights, lights same on each side.
I think it's mostly because of the long stroke of the T coming out, so you're staying away from it.
Well, that's the sheriff's guy.
So it's still, it's centered over the storefront, but.
And there's, and there's orange here, and what color are these things?
Purple and pink, right?
The pink and white, so the new next gen, I know we've got a couple in town, it's got the pink and the white on the wood grain, yeah, kinda goes up periodically, um, and then the cup essentially is meant to match that neon look on the building, is drawing over on the, on the. That's what happened during.
Why do you need a cup? Really, Dunkin' Donuts, the first one, use this freaking neon sign from Vegas.
It's all about the cup.
Yeah.
It's, it's an architectural.
Think about it, you got a nice stack of donuts with a couple little colors, instead of this rapid stuff, cup stuff, like, it's nothing out of.
I, I.
It's not Vegas.
No worse than Maury Pearl's sign.
No, it's, yeah, yeah.
I remember that.
You know, 40 square feet of 1950, that's, that's fucking huge.
The lights, the lights are very subtle, they're very thick.
I, I might not be in this one, I guess, I don't know, but you guys better talk it out, maybe I'm flipping out there, so like, wow.
I have all the questions for you.
Any questions?
Essentially, what, what we've got is a 10-foot-tall illuminated cup.
Yes, but, but it's not, the whole thing's not lit like a sock.
Yeah.
It's a 10-foot outline.
Yeah.
Right, and then you got a 20-something-foot sign, you got 14 feet of blue, five, I mean, pink, five on each side, then you got a 14-foot Dunkin' that's in white, then you go over to the 1950s, then you got 40 square feet in 1950, and is there any color on the 1950?
They are white PVC dimensional letters with top lighting coming down, yeah.
So it's not backlit, toplit?
Not at all, no, well, it's, it's got a light bar on the top.
Okay.
That'll come down, similar to what's there right now, I believe, for those three murals that are there, that are now removed, but that were there.
They're removed, and the soffits removed.
Yeah, well, they're, they're, they're redoing the whole facade.
They're putting a new soffit on it?
Uh, I don't know structurally, I don't think they're changing anything, I believe they're just refacing everything.
No, it was all lights, all around, they had, they had high-end lights, all going around it, and it come up, then it went in, and then the Dunkin' Donuts sign was there, that's all gone. I was down there this morning when he's ripping it up.
We took down the Dunkin' Donuts sign yesterday.
I said, you're taking it all down, and he goes, that's all gonna be gone.
Yep, yep, so the, the orange band that was up there before was a thick detail, it was, I don't even know, three feet, right?
I know.
That's taken down, now it's a sleeker, white, they have, it's an high-beam band that's shaped like an high-beam detail, and that's gonna be bordered, it's nine and a half inches in height, so they reduced it to about three feet to 10 feet, and that's gonna go around the bottom, and that has some accent lighting as well.
Any questions? Everyone got it?
How big is, can you illustrate how big this is, the 50?
Yeah. 40 square feet. Four by 10. Take that square, probably, right there, behind it, that blue square, behind it, that's, that's where the 50 sign is, right there. No, behind the TV, the wall behind it.
It's gonna be that big.
The fif- yeah, 40 square feet.
The 1950 sign is probably about the same size of what's, the, the three that are there now, minus, you know, maybe adding that Instagram logo at the bottom of the logo, which makes it that much taller, because it's total, total width.
You're not doing yourself any favors.
Size-wise, it's about the same as what's there right now. But it says 1950.
Wow!
It's not a, it's not branding. It says established 1950, it's not an obnoxious.
You're right, you're right. The Dunkin' Donut cup is obnoxious.
I'm trying to find where this, like, a, a vision of this cup.
Wait, do you see how he's got the sign, so he has it on his phone, it comes around the corner and it goes up and it wraps up, I know what he's doing.
If I may to, uh, just to speak, I mean, I think the, the, the Dunkin's trying to, to maintain this original structure, this original building.
I know.
I know, and, and, and because of its history in the city, because, and so it obviously requires a lot of modification, because it really doesn't fit Dunkin's model now, if you go to the new Dunkin' facilities, in fact, Victor and Octavio opened, opened a new one on Washington Street, it's much larger, much bigger drive-through situation, much, mu-
Street drive-through, right.
Right, it's a much bigger facility, um, and what Dunkin's trying to do now is, is utilize kind of a non-conforming facility, but dr- dress it up, so that it can, it's a little bit more of a story.
I don't even think they make the donuts here anymore, do they? No.
No.
That's brutal.
But that's.
Guys make them in the window, every day they watch them.
It's, it's, it's a, it's an effort.
Yeah, that was fun.
It's an effort to preserve history in a non-conforming kind of structural building.
So why don't we do this, why don't we put the fryolator back, we'll give him all the lights, and you can let him flip his donuts.
And by the way.
Ever watch them guys, it's wicked cool.
Victor and Octavio told me.
Huh? It's wicked cool, watch.
When I was a kid, it was awesome.
I was a kid, I used to watch that, right, yeah, I was with the old man, early in the morning, 5:30 in the morning, flipping donuts.
So it's, it's the only facility that's actually open.
Is that illuminated all, is the whole thing?
No, I don't know, did the, did the sign change at night, did it take hours, was it changed? But that's, but when the.
The signs aren't 24 hours, too.
That hours, too.
Yeah. I guess, I guess, I just gotta.
Southern Autory is a busy, it's a busy area.
You know, anyone that comes visit where I live, I bring them there and take pictures in front, so I do get it, I want it to look nice, not like.
Well, now you can take front of the, you can take a picture in front of the Instagram logo and they can.
At 3:00 AM.
At 3:00 AM, whoa! Boom, here we go, all right, I get it, I get it, I get it, I get it, yeah, all right, I can live with this, I guess.
I think part of the design is the interior and the exterior, it, it tries to brand it more to that diner, old 1950.
Right, the old dinopop.
They're giving it that look, that's why the neon.
Again, well, that's where it started, the same thing, right.
I mean, they're trying to merge it with the next-gen look, with that white and the kind of agenda branding, but they're trying to throw some neon on it to give it that classic feel and tie the.
But why not keep it original and put a fryolator in there, so the guy can flip donuts, he can make commercials there, right? Right where they have.
That old guy, yeah.
He's right there, he flipped the donuts.
The donuts.
He flipped the donuts.
They need to make money.
Look at, they sell millions and millions of donuts, let one guy flip the donuts, not the machine.
You can come out of retirement.
I was gonna say, we could get, could forget you that gig.
No, 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 no. They'd be broke in a week, could probably eat them all. All right, I guess, I guess, I'm, I guess, everyone's looking at me like I'm weird, but it's, uh, I guess, I guess, all right, all right. Any, any questions or comments, or you?
I do, um, I have a feeling that corporate is using this location strictly for promotional advertising, signage is going directly to advertising as opposed to the location. Established 1950 doesn't tell me that that Dunkin' Donuts was placed there in 1950, or the first one that ever opened. Established 1950, to me, signifies that the corporation was started in 1950.
First one, right, you want first.
I just have a feeling, like you said, it, it doesn't comport with what current Dunkin' Donuts is opening, uh, and I understand that, and I understand they're trying to preserve, but I also feel like the signage, especially the established 1950, shouldn't be so in your face, shouldn't be a billboard that people see coming up and down Southern Autory, it should still be tasteful for the community, that's just the feeling.
It says the original Dunkin', but it doesn't, you know, it's like, yeah.
It's hidden.
It is, it's so small. It should say the original Dunkin' Donuts, that, that should be a nice sign of, you know, like Dunkin' Donuts here, not established 1950, the original Dunkins.
Right.
This is the orig- this is the original.
The original.
Boom.
The purpose of the preservation is to show that that is the first one in the country.
I know you put 1950, but it doesn't, I didn't even think of that, it doesn't say this is ni- this.
And I feel like it ties together over the, over the store to the left, in white letters, the original Dunkin', then just to the right, established 1950.
But can you read that?
Also in white letters.
Can you really read that?
What's that?
Can you read that?
Well, they make.
I can read it here, but can you read it, huh?
They can make it bigger for you.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if it was a little bigger, I'd rather have that a little bigger, it's original, I, that, that would impress me.
Also, the sign, the type of signage that they use for the Dunkin' Donuts is different than every other Dunkin', they do the scroll kind of, Dunkin' Donuts to show that was, it was the first, it was the original, it was an old-fashioned store, um.
By using cursor?
But, and, but it is, but it is.
That's what it is, that's what they're using, cursor, not using fucking block letter and.
For the business, but it's also.
They don't even teach cursor.
Yeah.
So how do we change the original Dunkin' to get a little bigger? How big are those, like, seven inches, how, how, how big's those letters?
They're eight-inch letters.
Huh?
They're eight-inch, so like I said, the, the orange band up above is nine and a half, and then just below is, is the eight-inch.
That's not bad, eight-inch, that's, that's pretty good, really, that thing must be used for, the big letters must be really big.
I wanna make sure you know it was established.
I guess, that's what I wanna, I wanna make sure, like, the original, you go there and it says the original Dunkin' Donuts, right on the side, now it's gone, it's all ripped out.
Well, no, but that's gonna, the original Dunkin', the original Dunkin' is gonna be in the same spot the old sign was, it's, it's, we're making new letters, but it's gonna be the.
Just here.
Yeah, what's, what was existing that was removed a couple days ago, said the original Dunkin' Donuts, established 1950, was all right there, now they just split it, they put the original Dunkin' Donuts and established 1950.
And no other, so you're saying no one else has the original Dunkin' on it?
No, this is, this is the very first.
The only one in the country.
That's why, I'm sorry, I think it's.
All right. You know, like Dunkin' Donuts, the original Dunkin', okay, it's an original Dunkin', but.
I, I get it, I didn't know you were in marketing, too.
And Libya, I wanted to say the original, this is ours.
It does.
This is ours, but, you know, not little.
It doesn't say donuts anymore, because they, they don't call them Dunkin' Donuts, I mean, that's like, this is the only one that's gonna say Dunkin' Donuts on the top.
They call them Dunkin'.
In 10 years, this will be the only sign that's.
I know.
There, there's no drive-through, it's right above the door, they can walk in without seeing it, it's the original Dunkin'.
It also goes to, and again, um.
You're earning your money, Counselor, tonight. You're earning your money, Counselor, tonight.
But, but again, I mean, listen, the 1950 goes back to promoting it to the point where people like yourself will go take a picture with their families.
Right, that's who you.
And you, and, and it's a big wall that it's covering, so, you know, they, they understand, so when Dunkin' designs this, you know, Victor and Octavio don't design this themselves, it's a Dunkin' design.
Well, no, he flips donuts, he said.
Yeah, he does, he did.
Flips donuts.
He was up, I know, he did it four o'clock in the morning.
Right.
Um, but, but I mean, but it's, it's to promote the, the story, right, by having people come and take pictures of, of this in front of this place.
You'd be surprised.
Now that's a nice big 1950.
You'd be surprised, I bet, that's more, I, I honestly bet that's more of a tourist attraction than the Adams, you know, burial sites, you know?
It is.
It probably is.
Probably is.
Probably is, that's what I'm saying. So let's make it cool and nice.
I think.
Not neon. There's no neon in 1950.
I wasn't here, yeah.
She went to Vegas.
Vegas was.
Vegas is 60, 60, neon came in 60s.
But go to the old western towns, there are some old western towns.
They're all neon.
And they all look like that.
They do.
They all look, they all look like that, that's the old neon 1950 style where they promote, you know, all the restaurants.
No one's already got 1950 in there.
Well, that's what I know, like, because I was out in those western towns in, you know.
1950. 1970, maybe.
No, but it looks like 1950.
Yeah, they are pretty cool.
Counselor, I know you're not there.
I'm all set, you guys need any questions, anything? Kinda gonna, yeah?
I think we're just gonna end up with a big sign out there, and you're never gonna get a donut out of it.
She's never gonna say donut again.
It'll look like a billboard.
Never make a donut, but they say donut.
Go down the street and get your donut.
Say, I thought you wanted kraut. No, I want donut.
Looks like a kraut, a donut.
I want it like a honey dip donut.
So we have ordinance, I.
Thank you, does anyone want to speak in favor? Anyone here want to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call, call.
John Rotafield, 62 Grandwall Road. I'm in favor of this, all I keep thinking about is Boston Scientific. This sign is way smaller than the Boston Scientific sign that we approved. This is a, like, a landmark, you know, they're, they're kind of making it a museum, you're driving down Southern Otterie, there's not any residential people that are living there, it's gonna be shining in their face or whatever, so I think this is a good idea, I don't think there's anything wrong with it, I'm not sure why we're taking so long on this case, thank you.
Thank you, John. Because we want it right, John. Gotta get it right. Anyone else? Opposed or undecided? Third call? Call of party hearing closed, I got a letter here from May 4th, 2022, 543 Southern Otterie, case number ZB82232, we reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. Do anyone oppose or undecided? First call? Second call? Third call closed. I'll be voting in favor.
I'm good.
Good.
Favor.
Good.
I'm in favor.
Good, good, everyone's good.
I'm getting way pushed back on that.
Motion, boss?
Case number ZB82232DDP Realty LLC for a variance to install a new science for Dunkin' Donuts on the premise number 533 Southern Otterie Quincy and make a motion to grant the variance.
Second. Counselor, you do want to say anything?
I'm all set, I.
Fair enough.
I can bet that somehow I could beat up my face for it.
It'll be less, less feedback than Popeyes.
Yeah, less feedback than Popeyes, oh my god.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor. Further into tonight's agenda, we gotta do Beale Street? Case number ZB8233, Chan Realty LLC for special permit variance to remove one story commercial storefront building and two four family houses on Cushing and Chapman Streets to construct a new mixed use building consisting of 80 residential units, six commercial storefronts units along Beale Street and two levels of parking with 93 vehicles on the premise 21 to 29 Beale Street. Counselor? You're earning your money tonight, buddy.
Yes. Norrie was so nice to me, she just said, I'm gonna put all your cases on right now tonight. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Edward Fleming, on behalf of DCC Acquisitions LLC. You identified the properties, Mr. Chairman, 21 to 31 Beale Street, 51 to 55 Cushing Street, and 65 to 67 Chapman Street. These sites are located in the Wallaston Business District in a business C zoning district. However, since I filed the application, the council has now approved a new zoning district for the Wallaston area called the Wallaston Urban Redevelopment District. Much like the Quincy Center Urban Redevelopment District, Wallaston has been rezoned into this new district to allow these denser residential multi-family or mixed use developments. I'm joined tonight by Carlos Sculte of CEC Inc., the project engineer. Carlos is gonna talk about the engineering on this, and David Freed of Chu Architects, uh, Chu and Company, who is the architect on this proposal. This is a project that I have worked on probably for the last three and a half years. I worked with a couple different owners when this was initially proposed, and this was proposed in light of the changes that the council was talking about in the Wallaston Business District to encourage redevelopment of the old and tired multi, mixed use buildings in the area and to encourage dense residential development of this area. This development includes obviously all of the commercial storefronts on, on Beale Street from the Newcombe Farm Restaurant, all the way to the old Barry's Deli Restaurant, now known as the Coy Restaurant. All of those storefronts are part of this proposal. It also includes a four family house on Cushing Street and a four family directly behind the site on Chapman Street, all of which, by the way, were included in the new Wallaston Urban Redevelopment District. The proposal involves obviously the removal of all of those buildings and the construction of a new 80 unit mixed use resident, building. Those, it will include six new commercial storefronts on Beale Street with two levels of structured parking in the, in rear for 93 vehicles. When the council recently approved the Wallaston Urban Redevelopment District, they, they, they required in that new business district one parking space per residential unit. This, this proposal includes more than one residential parking space per unit by including 93 parking spaces for the 80 residential units. It will include an elevated patio, it'll in, along the second story of the building, which David will talk about in more detail, a meeting space, other amenities, a fitness facility, bike storage room, and a dog run for the residents. This proposal, at the time that we, we plied, required both a special permit from this body for the mixed use building in a business C zoning district, as well as variances from the residential regulations, or the dimensional regulations of 17 section 4.12. That's the relief that we're seeking here tonight. As I said, I started on this about three and a half years ago, and I appeared, and I've, and this project has appeared before the planning board on numerous occasions. I also had the pleasure of working with Councilor Nina Liang, who, who took the lead on this because of a conflict that Mr. Phalen had, and Nina conducted a number of neighborhood meetings, she shared with me concerns of the neighbors throughout the whole proposal. We had a, we had numerous conversations back and forth, working with the peer review engineer, the city's traffic department, the city's DPW department, and after numerous hearings and numerous meetings, this was, this was fully approved by the planning board at its last public meeting. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to turn this over to maybe to Carlos first to talk about the site plan, and then have David walk through the architectural.
Okay.
We have them on boards for you tonight.
All right.
So that you can see what.
Thank you, Ed. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Carlos Sculte with Civil and Environmental Consultants, we're the civil engineers on the project, we also coordinate with the traffic and landscape architecture components of the project. I'll just walk you through some of the existing additions, as well as the proposed project design to, to help you understand what was presented and what we've worked through with the peer reviewers and the city throughout the, the planning board process. So as Ed mentioned, the, the site is bounded by Cushing Street, Beale Street, and Chapman Street, includes the retail frontage of the existing buildings for the full length from Cushing to Chapman along Beale Street, as well as the two residential buildings with addresses off of Cushing and Chapman at the back of the property. It's almost entirely consists of buildings and pavement with a little bit of landscaping in between. There's a fair amount of grade change, almost 10 feet from Cushing on the high side, all the way down to Chapman on the low side, so there's a good amount of elevation change that we've incorporated into the project design. One of the big elements of the overall design and what we worked out with the, the peer reviewer throughout the planning board process was, this area of Wallaston is actually susceptible to some localized flooding. It's not in a FEMA regulated flood plain, but the city has been advancing some flood modeling for portions of the city, and this is one area that they have focused on. So we worked with the peer reviewer and the city's engineer that's doing the flood modeling and incorporated that into the project. So in the center of the site, there's, there's a low point roughly in the middle of the site here, which essentially takes stormwater runoff from the block, basically down by Cushing, Chapman, Beale Street, but there's some localized flooding there. If you drive by, you know, any given day after a significant rainfall event, you'll see some flooding back there. So what we did was, we analyzed the stormwater to account for all that, the natural ponding that's occurring there, and also designed a project to account for being able to accommodate any sort of temporary impacts with flooding until the city is able to implement more large scale improvements to address it on, you know, a regional standpoint, instead of just taking it site by site. So I'll walk you through some of those elements as we get into the project. So for the site layout, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Uh, so for the site layout, with the natural grade change, we do have residential frontage with the new building, sorry, the retail frontage, as I mentioned, all the commercial spaces will front on Beale Street. There's actually a greater amount of setback that we're providing in proposed conditions because the under existing condition is essentially anywhere from a zero lot line setback to a six inch setback or sort of Cushing. We've actually pushed the building back further away from Beale Street to provide better pedestrian accommodations and setbacks in those locations, and also for the landscape plan, talk a little bit about the landscaping we're also incorporating there. And then also along Chapman Street, the building actually approached over the property lines as it stands today, we're pulling it back a little bit to try to be able to contain the building on the property. There's two way access off of Chapman Street, there's a loading dock access for moving, move out, as well as trash management and other aspects that serve the residential as well as commercial facilities. And then there's entrance to the garage, so all the parking is proposed within that enclosed garage with three points of access. There's one level garage slab that's access off of Chapman Street, the lower level, and working with the natural progress to use the access off of Cushing Street, which is almost potentially higher, which is a separate access off of Cushing Street, which provides access to a flat deck, so those aren't connected, they're two independent parking decks, and the parking will be coordinated with the tenants and assigned accordingly, so people know where their spaces are and they can avoid circulation around the neighborhood. Ultimately, Chapman Street is a two way and Cushing is a one way. One of the things we did talk about with the, the city's traffic engineer was whether or not it makes sense to turn Cushing into a partial two way for a portion of it or keep it a one way. Ultimately, through that process, we decided to keep it a one way for the time being, and we're working with them to identify if there's some potential signage for loading and access and potential handicap spaces, just to be modified between along Cushing Street here and move some of the potential loading spaces for off hour loading onto Beale Street for more of that commercial activities that we have. In addition to some of those things, there's also a significant amount of, you know, conditions that we worked into the planning board approval that factored in a lot of these design elements that we're working through, discussions and part of the peer review process. There is a dog park proposed for residents as well as some of the neighbors, proposed along the front of the property just to be able to provide a little landscaped area, those areas where the residents can be able to utilize, and then we have a landscaping strip along the back of the property, but it's a residential uses area.
What's gonna be in those areas where, where there's grass? Is there a place to congregate, sit at a table for the neighbors?
That's gonna be more landscaping and vegetation, so along this back edge, there's gonna be a significant landscape offer designed to break up the side of the building, appearance wise. That's essentially gonna be a keystone, dog run, there's gonna be a sitting area here. More of the amenity spaces for the retail uses will be along Beale Street, and there's a significant roof deck.
No, the people, the roof deck, where do the people go that lived in? Get some fresh air and be where they, they live.
On that roof deck.
Yeah.
Yeah, you get a dog and you sit with your dog and enjoy life.
On the roof deck, on the roof deck primarily, but you know, you know, one of the things that, as Counselor was saying, you'll see it in the, in the other plans as well, is that as part of the Wallaston redevelopment design, if you find that we widen sidewalks, make it enlightened in that whole area, create outside seating space for like maybe a restaurant that could potentially utilize this space, so there's gonna be a lot more activity along this, this run.
But I'm just curious, for the people that are gonna be in 80 units, where do they go to sit? On a deck?
Out here, yeah.
So that roof deck is not up on the upper floors, and David will talk a little bit about that, that's basically on top of the garage level, so it's kind of closer to the street grade, so it's not towering up in the air. Uh, but yeah, so that'll be one of those spaces, that'll be an amenity space for the residents to utilize. There's also some interior spaces, I believe there's a gym contemplated, as well as some community meeting spaces within the building as part of the commercial amenities. And then just talking about the project design utilities, fairly straightforward, there's water sewer drain along the entire length of the project. One of the conditions was we had to do a place, the water main, we have the Beale Street, there's an intersection along Chapman Street, it's just in terms of mitigation to upgrade the infrastructure that's a little bit more aged in that area, so that's what those things done for utilities, otherwise there's electric, telecommunication, and all available already for connection. For the stormwater management aspect of the project, let me know if I'm going too fast or.
No, not at all.
From the stormwater management perspective, one of the things that we incorporated into the project design was because of that localized flooding, we treated it as if it were in a regulated flood plain, so working very closely with the architecture team, we designed the, the garage so that if there was any flooding, it would be able to enter into the garage. The entire garage level is designed to be wet flood proof, meaning it can get wet and the materials will be used in order to accommodate that, and the water will essentially enter and recede as appropriate. We designed a stormwater management system beneath the garage that actually provides additional stormwater storage and detention, so we're actually providing more volume in the proposed condition to be able to contain any sort of incidental stormwater that does land here, more so than what was there under existing conditions, so we're improving that condition, with the understanding that this is essentially an accommodation in the temporary condition until such time that the city can have a more comprehensive approach to essentially either upsizing pipes all the way to Wallaston Beach, which is where this ultimately discharges. So we're designing for the current construction as well as for this interim condition until there's a more large scale improvement. And that was all coordinated with the peer reviewers, as well as the various city DPW departments and the other folks that reviewed the project. So from a very high level, that's the engineering design, and as Ed mentioned earlier, one of the big elements was, what are we doing along Beale Street from a landscape perspective in addition to the screening that we have for the residential properties? We hired Hawk Design Group that does a lot of this kind of work, and we use the same materials, the same brick banding, the same aesthetic that have been used in other parts of the city, as well as focusing on some more contemporary elements to highlight some of the main entrances to the residential components of the building, as well as potential outdoor seating spaces that could be utilized by a restaurant, use it as were to be restaurants at the corner here, and then also providing a more expansive pedestrian realm all the way from Cushing down to Chapman, providing a better connection to the MBTA station, which is essentially a block further to the west. So that was a big element of making sure that we, we provide that connectivity from ADA compliance standpoint, as well as just from a comfort standpoint to, to be able to get access to the MBTA station for a transit oriented development of this kind. So with that, I'll turn it over to David a little bit.
Just to highlight you, Mr. O'Brien, as the engineer, the $150,000 cost to replace the line in Chapman Street was a significant upgrade as part of the mitigation package, but also as part of the Wallaston redevelopment plan, the city has actually hired Weston, Weston Sampson, no, Weston Sampson, would it occur to do an overall study of flood, flooding concerns in Wallaston, and there's a pump station actually being located behind the CVS, that's, that the city's actually gonna install a pump station.
Yeah, it's a little spot.
And it's going to address all the flood concerns in this area, so this was really just a contribution towards the city to other, other upgrades that they're gonna make along that area.
Thank you.
David?
My name is David Freed, I'm an architect at Chu and Company, and I'm pleased to take you through these plans.
Yep.
Counselor, while he's getting ready, what?
Do you want me to move these on that?
That proposal the other night, did they keep more than seven stories? That's part of the agreement?
Yeah, the, I know that the Wallaston, the, the city council voted, I think, they, they maintained it at six, which is what this building is, but in, in the, for the CVS location, I believe they went to 10 stories.
Okay, thank you.
Because there's two buildings, my office is at 85 Clay Street, which is right behind the CVS, and there's two 12 story buildings.
Closeable 12s, yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Our, our site is, is right here, it's just three blocks from the Mollston T Station, we're sandwiched in between Newport Ave and Hancock Street. These are a couple views looking at the street, the present condition. This is a present condition shot of Cushing, and you can see in this image the change in the grade from Cushing down to Chapman.
That's where the water is, right?
Yeah.
And then on the side of that wall.
These are existing, they were shots of Chapman.
Mr. Ken?
This diagram just illustrates that our main entrance is just 600 feet from the Wallston T Station. Quick overview, we have a, a larger six story piece here at the front of Beale Street, and we have a couple entrances that, we have the main entrance on Beale Street, a secondary entrance on Chapman. We have another entrance and loading dock in this corner that's recessed. We have a garage entrance off of Cushing, and a second garage entrance off of Chapman. And the building encloses this courtyard on the second floor, which is built above This plan of our lower level garage, this illustrates the entrance here to our garage, we've got 41 spaces located here, we have a recessed loading area, we have a, a loading dock here for waste and, and delivery of goods, and then there's a connection back into the main elevator bank. Our first floor has six retail spaces along Beale Street. We've set the building back significantly here to widen the sidewalk and to provide a really nice pedestrian experience. The garage entrance is located here, we've got 52 parking spaces on this step. The commercial space located on the corner of Cushing and Beale is a two story, is a two story space. Our second floor has some amenities, spaces, got a meeting room, a gym, maintenance office for the building, and a commercial, this is the second floor of the commercial space located on the corner, and then the, the units that don't need themselves to wrap around and define a courtyard, which is built on top of the garage. We've got 80 units, it's a mix of 46 one bedrooms and 33 two bedrooms and three studios.
Can you say that again, please?
Oh, yeah, 46 one bedrooms, 33 two bedrooms, and three studios.
Thank you.
Again, our third floor, third floor plan here just, again, just shows that the, the units, front Beale Street, Chapman, and in the rear and long Chapman. and in the rear, in Long Chapman, which is. Third, fourth floor are the same. And then when we get to the fifth floor, the building is really just the mask that's front on Beale Street. And then as we get to our sixth floor, the sixth floor is set back eight feet on Beale Street and on Chapman, so that the perception of grade will be of more of a five-story building, that you would really want to see this upper story. And then finally, on top of that roof deck, are the occupants of the building. A lot of open space, so they can take in about those views of both the ocean, downtown, Blue Hills. Now, our front elevation is composed of brick along this piece with some brick banding. This portion here would be a masonry product that looks like limestone. It's a cast stone product that's modular, like brick as well. And then the sixth floor would be metal panels. The windows would be aluminum. We'd integrate signage with some vertical banding, and then signage mounted to the front of the building. The Cushing Street elevation shows more of a four-story volume here with the six-story piece set back. And then the building drops down a little bit to be a four-story piece along Cushing. So the garage is expressed as brick with aluminum windows. And then the residential portion is lap-side with standing scene. This is the rear elevation of the building. Again, this is our garage. This is the residential units above. And then here are our floodgates. On the Chapman elevation, you can see that the building returns here as five stories, but the sixth story set back. That's the courtyard way beyond. Our loading dock is located here, recessed between these two volumes. And that's our garage entrance. This is a section, just looking through the hallway, from Chapman.
What's the width on Chapman there?
Sorry?
For that section, what is the width of that section on Chapman? So basically where you drop down, I'm just trying to find the...
The height of the building?
No, no, I'm trying to figure out how far into Chapman you went. You know, lower, you know. I just... So you have your main building?
Yeah, I'm 100%.
Yeah, I'm probably not explaining it well, because, so, how far down? Yeah, like where do you, when you drop down the stories? When you drop down from the sixth to the fourth?
Oh.
What's the, how far is this?
Oh, that this is?
Yeah.
Oh.
Now, you've gotta go back to what I'm saying.
Sorry.
Please come back to it, if you want to look at it after.
No, no, I was just wondering.
Sorry, I'm a little more interested in this than the sign.
This is about 100 feet, and then this is probably about 60.
All right, perfect. So 60 feet is the real Beale Street, six-story, that's the width of it? And then you're coming back about 100 from when you dropped down?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, two more.
Yeah, I didn't get the plans. I only had these, I was like, this is a big project for what I have.
This is, again, another section from Cushing to Chapman. And you see the courtyard view of the backside of the Beale Street portion. The first returns here, and then changes back into the Ares Craft Masonry product. So these are some images of the materials that'll be used. We were proposing brick along Beale and Chapman. This is the image of the Ares Craft. It comes in a flat texture and also sort of a rock piece. Integrate both of these into the project. This is an image of standing c metal roof, which would be on the fourth floor of the residential piece. Lap-side in here, we have aluminum and glass railings, and we have aluminum storefronts. And then we'd also probably detail around with some granite, some Quincy granite.
Quincy granite, hey.
Was that established?
Yeah, we gotta put it established.
These are just some quick 3D views. This would be the view looking, you're saying, just beyond Cushing, looking towards Newport Ave. This is the view looking back towards Hancock from Newport. The corner of Chapman and Beale, I chamfered the corner, so it's more of a soft corner. It's a sidewalk. This is a view looking towards Beale Street from Cushing. See the garage entrance over here? Here's our dog park. And a view looking along Chapman up towards Beale Street.
I agree.
And that's also, you're getting into the proposed project.
Very strong.
Any questions?
No questions.
I have none at this time. I asked my question.
Thank you.
Well, good. Does anyone want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor, first call? Second call? Third call closed. I have a letter here from the DPW, 2129 Beale Street, case number ZBA 2233. We reviewed the project and comments for this project. Went to the planning board, all concerns and comments. We provided have been addressed properly. We do not have anything further for the zoning board of appeals. Benningham opposed or undecided? Step forward. Name and address for the record, please.
Michael Murphy.
Wait till you get here, please, sorry.
Mike Murphy, 22 Chapman Street.
All right, Mike.
I can't even park in front of my own house, daily, right? Where all these construction workers get parked? You know what I mean? Every night, the restaurants are open. What is it, 20? You can't even park in front of your own house. I just fixed my fence at the house and all. They backed into it, banging U-turns. So I don't see how these guys are gonna park anywhere near this site. Trucks, whatever. Where do they go? On the side of the street?
They'll be pulling up the women's stuff, right? On Beale Street.
You know what I mean?
Right.
I can't even park in front of my own house at night. There is a Friday, Saturday night. There's over 20 restaurants up there. I'm just saying that, you know, something like that belongs downtown. Do they got enough parking in there?
Yeah. It's 13 extra slots.
When people visit, where do they go?
I got 13 extra slots. That's something.
Yes, that's not enough. You know there's no parking around here.
There's none.
No.
You're right.
Every Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, the restaurants take all the parking. And then they're in there for four or five hours in front of my house. They're banging U-turns, you know, they hit my fence, I had to fix it. You know what I mean? It's all night long, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Then you got the movie theater. They're dumping cement there now. That's an eyesore, you know?
It is.
Should be a parking somewhere for the restaurants. I mean, something like that doesn't belong, I mean, to me it doesn't.
Yeah.
We've argued a couple of times with some of the restaurants about lack of parking. And every time it ends up in court, we lose. That's just a heads-up.
Yeah, we got two-hour parking, right? For residents that live there, you know? And when they busted my fence, right? I couldn't even open my driveway, so I got tickets.
These guys are making, they're making sure that they need it, but the other stuff, we can't, we can't...
I'm just saying, the construction...
Oh, you're right.
Where are they gonna go?
That's gonna be tough.
The 60 to 70 guys that are working.
Hundred.
You know what I mean? The trucks coming, they're digging up the streets. They're gonna use our street for a cut through, because they're gonna block off Beale Street. And they're digging it up.
Really, you're right.
There's a lot of, I work for the gas company, I know what goes on. But I mean, that project, just to do that lot, that's huge, right?
Well, it's huge what they're doing, because they're taking all the water from that area.
Right, that's made it back there with the building, it sinks down like this.
And then, yeah, and then they're putting these big wells underneath to capture all that water.
That's a lot of work.
It is, a lot of work. It's a lot of work, you're right.
Well, their project is, they're telling us alleviates the flooding in that lot.
Yeah, like flooding back into their own property, that's a good way.
Well, then it goes down. Then it's got leaching fields, instead of just pavement and all that.
And they're saying that the city's gonna put a pipe in to carry it away.
Yeah, I'm just saying, all this work...
Gonna be tons of work, right? Where they gonna park, you're right. You're right.
Yeah.
And that's up to the construction people to find places and then to park, wherever it be. And on Wallaston Beach, huh?
Here to say, listen, you guys gotta do some park over here or something, you know what I mean? In the residential areas, you know?
Yeah.
Do you have residential parking signs right there or anything?
No, it's two-hour parking in front of my house, so I have to use my driveway most of the time.
That's the commercial parking thing, two hours, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And then it goes away at six?
Yeah. But the rest of the world started circling, looking for spots. Now they're using, you know, the movie theater, right? I should put up a sign with the movie theater, there's park here, instead of in front of my house. But now they're using it for parking now, you know what I mean? You know what I mean? Then you got the meetings at the church, right? There's only about six spots there, but there's probably 30 or 40 people. I'm just worried about that part of it, then, where these guys are gonna park, you know? And the dirt that it comes with, you know?
Right, dirt, it's gonna be...
You know, they're gonna block Beale Street, then Chapman's gonna become a council.
But all the trucks out there, right?
I don't think they're gonna block it. It's gonna be tough getting through, I tell you, you're right.
You know what I mean? Then it'd be good for us, but there's no parking. I mean, when someone visits that...
Theoretically, what's supposed to happen is if they hit those side streets, Chapman, the other ones with the two-hours, eight-hour thing, if the city enforces it, they'll have to find someplace off there to park.
They're gonna have to park opposite.
If they enforce it, that's the trick.
Put the parking at the T.
We can't...
That's what I would say. Everyone from the construction side goes over behind CVS or, you know, somewhere.
Parking at the T, hey. Need a parking.
It's gotta be wide, wide.
Construction needs, yeah. But, and they have to come up with that, construction managers are playing, you're right. And people, where they're parking, how they're gonna get their work back. That ought to be worked out.
They'll tell you they're gonna take the T.
There's water down there the whole area.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
We know.
You know, you know the building will back a knee, that's why they're gonna park a lot.
Thanks, maybe they can alleviate some of that. Anyone else opposed or undecided?
I'm undecided. John Rotifell, 62, Grumwold Road. One of my main reasons I stood up and I was against the Wallaston urban redevelopment plan was because once that is officially passed, plans like this won't even come before the zoning board anymore. They'll just get a certificate of consistency from planning to get it approved. And I actually think that you do a better job here at zoning of making sure bad projects don't get approved than they do at planning.
Thank you, John.
Okay, so that was one of my main reasons why I didn't think this should happen. Now, this project here, we totally need the new growth. We need the new taxes. I asked before, I wanted to make sure any developer, I mean, Mr. Fleming, anyone that does develop, I hope they don't get tax breaks on top of it. I hope everyone pays full taxes for these developments that they do. But my problem is that the second story, there's residential units with that commercial unit. So one question is, will the people from that second-story restaurant, will they be able to go hang out on the roof deck there? Like, I actually think that there's a potential for, I don't think the residential aspect of that is gonna make a problem for the neighborhood, but I think that, like, if that becomes a trendy 3,000-square-foot restaurant, where hundreds of people come there every Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, and they park in front of that gentleman's house over there, it's not gonna be good. What we really need on a good Wallaston urban redevelopment plan is kind of working together. Like, all these trucks could maybe park at the Wallaston Theater when they're developing that one.
You'll have to figure that out.
But developers have to stop playing together, because right now, they're like monopoly pieces, and they all own like this spot, this spot, that spot. And to have a really good urban plan, everyone's working together. And to have a really good urban plan, you don't cut the zoning board out of making decisions.
Thank you, John.
And I think that, you know, the Wallaston urban redevelopment plan isn't 100% passed. It's only 99.5% passed, but it probably is gonna happen. But I'm not sure what we can do. This is pretty much your last case, I think, of Wallaston, that you can actually make something to do on. But anyway, since you took so long on that other one. I wanted to hit Chick-fil-A on the way home, but they're already gonna be closed, so have a good night.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, he can.
Yes, couldn't help it. Is there anyone else, last call? Call up out of hearing, close. Counsel, you wanna speak?
I'm tired, I'm tired.
It does work.
We used to have yours.
You used to have it, and then we stole it back.
It sure did work.
Well, good evening, chairman of the board, members of the zoning board. My name is Neilie. For the record, I live up on 100 Grand View, which is in this area. But I'm here today in my capacity as a city councillor. The ward council for the area, councillor Phelan, is conflicted out. And so I took it upon myself in working with him to essentially run the community meetings and making sure to engage residents throughout this entire process. So just, you know, if you will hear me, I'd like to give you some background as to community engagement up until this point. It's a huge project, right? And so it's super important that we make sure to have residents' voices present throughout the entirety of it. So just to start off, we held a community meeting in December. We had two planning board meetings, and I consolidated all of the questions, concerns, expressions of support and opposition, and, you know, compiled everything together here. I had shared this list, it was an ongoing list per meeting, with the developers and Mr. Fleming. And every step of the way, they made sure to bring those concerns to DPW, Inspection Services, and TPAL to make sure that they were addressed at each meeting before we proceeded. I want to just acknowledge and recognize, as a few folks have mentioned, that a number of these concerns will have to be addressed through the Wallaston URDP. Just to give you all an update, the scope of the URDP map did pass through the council recently. That's just to outline the map itself, not necessarily all of the requirements within it. So it has to go to DHCD first. And once it passes DHCD, it'll then come back in, not to John's way, but to, you know, just clarify, you are involved in that process and making sure that anything we do move upon obviously has to go through all of you for parking requirements, sidewalk, you know, lifts and all of that. So that's not going to happen until it goes through DHCD first. All that being said, it's still important, I think, to acknowledge all of the concerns and questions that were brought up along the way. So one was confirming that these will be condos or rentals. Number two, residents are interested in understanding what the flood mitigation plan will look like. Obviously flooding is a huge concern in this area. Rendings of what the building will look like panned out a bit more. When we first had a community meeting on it, the plans were not in this kind of detail. And so one of the requests that came through was can we have, you know, plans shared with residents that are a little bit more panned out in that area? So including the library and the renderings, other residential buildings by Wallaston Liquor, et cetera. Keeping the street parking spaces was really important to residents. Maintaining the curb line and re-striping existing lines, introducing bike lanes to that area was also a concern for parking. Parking came up a lot, ensuring that there's ample parking and management of the parking for residents first, then employees, and then consumers at the retail locations that would be coming in as well. Incorporate ample green space and landscaping, making sure the area is more pedestrian-friendly, so wider sidewalks, more trees, making the dog park public, which was addressed, thank you. Affordable housing options for this project, commercial and retail on first floor creates more congestion and traffic, so making sure to address that and keeping that front of mind. Some Cushing Street issues that were brought up. Delivery trucks using Cushing Street makes it difficult to exit, and speeding is also a concern in that area. A concern brought up from Western Ave was 80 units is a bit large for this area. And then from that meeting, between that time and tonight's meeting, a letter was sent out to all of Ward 5, 3, and 2, to 1,807 residents. And from that letter that went out, I received two correspondences from residents, both of whom couldn't be here this evening. One was from Chapman Street, and one was from Clay. One was from Chapman Street and one was from Clay. And both of those concerns were around parking, again, the congestion, parking and traffic. I do want to say that all of these correspondences and communicate that we've had back and forth, I want to note that the majority of this area is API-owned, right? With residents and business owners. And it was important for me with the engagement piece that we translate all correspondences and notices that have gone out. The developer has taken them on, has paid for it. So I just want to acknowledge again, any correspondence moving forward even after tonight will be translated to make sure it's inclusive for the entire community. One of the concerns I had brought up along the way was expressed here this evening with construction, right? Making sure that there are ample plans in place ahead of time. I had coordinated that concern with the planning department. And they had responded that I would be able to work directly with Inspection Services, DPW, and TPAL to make sure those plans are readily available before any construction happens and that everybody in that area is all on the same page. So again, you know, it's important for me to make sure that all of that is shared with you and any other concerns brought up along the way from residents, I'll make sure to share with all of you as well. And in response to all of those concerns, there was a six-page, essentially conditional report from the planning board. And this includes addressing mainly the parking and traffic. I want to call out Ally from TPAL, who was phenomenal and essentially said that this project has to propose an engineer-designed plan for, you know, all of the parking, the traffic, alarm, lighting, the vehicle, pedestrian use in the entire area and get approval from TPAL before anything can move forward. So again, it's... the bulk of this concern, again, as a resident, as a councillor representing the community on the side, is parking and traffic. And I'm confident that once the plan gets submitted and thoroughly reviewed, we'll have a better understanding from there before it moves forward. So thank you all for your time and for entertaining all of that information. And again, if any other information comes up from residents, I'll make sure to pass along as well.
Counselor, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I... when I first...
Yeah, me too.
First read it, saw it, heard about it. It was... I think the design of the building is done well. I think it's really thoughtful to... I mean, look, everybody knows Wallaston needs to grow up a little bit. And I think this is a really... the renderings make this look like a really nice thoughtful project. I like the way it dipped down on the back. You know, of course, like the parking and traffic concerns that come with any urban development are always going to be, you know, expressed and they're always going to be impacted by the few that live there. And I think that the, you know, city council really needs to sit down and figure out... I mean, we tried to address some parking issues as a city a couple of years ago, but I think that some more thought needs to be given to it because it's a consistent, you know, issue as the council complained or mentioned, you know, like... but it's something we can't solve. I mean, this is the growth that this area has been, you know, destined for and positioned for. And I think it's... I think it's a nice project.
Taking the favor as well. I mean, nothing new has been built in Wallaston in a long time. I think the design and the architects at home is a really robust water treatment idea. I mean, Quincy's got terrible low spots, and I think this addresses a lot of it. So I'll be voting in favor.
I'll be voting in favor as well. I believe that the project is well-considered. The artwork and the design is excellent. And I think the community is being well-represented by Counselor again. And obviously, she's aware of the parking issues that the neighborhood has expressed. I tell her to vote in favor.
I think a lot of people have looked at this and reviewed this before we get to it. I've asked the developers to see if they can come up with something for stage and design construction. So if you can stage guys out of the zone and bring them in. They do that on a lot of projects with constant trucks that are coming in. They hold them and they give them a little lead time to get them up to the site so that you can get them unloaded and out of there quickly. And the parking's an issue. And again, our hands are tied as far as the parking that's existing up there. I'm glad to see the improvement. It's too bad that the CBS lot wasn't a three-story garage, but unfortunately, it's not. And I don't think there's an easy answer. Hopefully, these new project developments will address some of the parking issue. Okay, now you're bringing people in, you're going to park them. A couple of the projects that we put in those areas, I don't see as bad an impact as the restaurants. That said, I'll be voting in favor. They don't pay attention, but that's...
City thought, city plans.
It's good.
It's going to be part of the planning.
It's good.
We have some empty lots down there now.
Could we have a motion, please? Mr. Chairman, case ZBA 22-33, Chan Real, BLC, for special apartment variance for move the one-story commercial storefront building and two-four family houses on Cushing and Chapman Streets to construct a new mixed-use building consisting of 80 residential units, six commercial storefront units along Beale Street with two levels of parking for 93 vehicles on the premise number 21-29 Beale Street Quincy and make a motion to grant the special apartment at the variance.
Second.
On the motion? Do you think that's all in favor? Aye. Close. The vote.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Close. Get them out. Thank you, gentlemen.